Okay, welcome everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. And I just need to take a motion to move into executive. Executive.
I'll make the motion, we move into second.
I second it.
Okay. Motion and second.
Okay. Have we got it?
We have to vote individually for this.
Yes. Did we do that already? Holy cow.
Roger.
Okay, I gotta stay on my toes.
Roger. Roger.
Alright. Okay. Alan.
Yes.
Yes.
Randall. Do you vote? Steve, I can't remember. Okay. Randall. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go.
We can probably come out. We just won't start our meeting until five thirty. We can come out of executive session, we just don't need to start until five thirty. So. Well, I'm surprised when the first day of the day is coming. But, and then we just get our department, still there today, which is really easy.
It's impressive.
We've had ours for twenty years. And I think it's probably gonna be like everything else that's starting to break down in our house.
That's where I was. Mine just, where all it would do is push it in front. So, finally decided it's time.
I was in the FFA two rooms today at Green Canyon. They were going over, they had a little quiz on, on FFA and where they got their colors and when they organized. And the kid, the Shapiro kid who's, who's now a advisor there. They're doing their presentations starting Thursday. And he said, "I expect you to be dressed up in your best dress." And he said, "I'll be here in my suit." And he said, "When you make a presentation, that's..." And I was just thinking, the FFA really knows how to teach kids to...
They do.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's as fine a looking group as you'll...
If you've ever been to a national FFA convention.
That's one I've never done. There was a time when I was a principal that I went to everything for one year and was planning on going to. Something came up and I didn't get to go.
Yeah, I went when I was in high school.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to do that though.
Yeah.
And they were pretty hot.
Really? Like the, the, got the mayor and the council?
Yeah, city council's base. They felt like, uh...
Gary? Gary? They just love letting her come.
They should be real happy if we sent them thousands. They'll give us a hundred. I was trying to see a way we could bump you up into here. When's the ice cream shop open? When's the ice cream shop supposed to finish?
I haven't actually heard anything.
This is just a... Make him aware. They'll come back if the next one sees you. Uh, this is just a quick...
I don't know who it is. I don't think, they said he's from the three building. I can't find anybody that knows now. Right across the street from where the Mountain Man stand. It's a two-story building. It's gonna happen.
He can't. He can't. That would be good. How much money does he have?
Uh, that's Shelley Robinson. The teacher who, this guy, he's, he's used to culture.
This is, I copied this one off of, okay. Approval of the old address.
His class. He just got it up yesterday. He was talking about some of the ideas.
So, he can go first?
I thought it sure seemed to be very... He, I was just mesmerized.
It's like, it's like...
Kathy, we can probably come out. We can probably come out. We just won't start our meeting until five thirty. We can come out of executive session, we just don't need to start until five thirty, so...
Should we just do it at the same time?
Well, you can. But if you wanna move...
I'll start one minute.
Every time I woke up, I was going, "Now, how am I gonna apply?"
I'm not. I'm just gonna wait till they tell me what this is all about.
Oh, it's study. Legal charge.
And I, I still have a hard time reading things on my computer. I do so much better with paper still, 'cause that's how my brain is all programmed. I did that. What's up? Yes, and I just gave it to him. Yeah. So, um, I gave it to him. I'll mention that.
Yes, and athletes pick them out of those... Steve? If I look back, I think, and I can, I wish we could stay in the family. Yeah. I, I just think there's more there and it goes on through life. That chair will come up. Stay up?
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and take a motion to come out of our executive, executive session, which was for the sale of real property. So, I will take a motion.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Alright. Well, it is Thursday, December 6th, and we are here for our study session. And we want to welcome all of you here. We'll begin by doing the pledge, and Roger Pulsifer will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Okay, I'd like to do the roll call. Tonight, we have Dale Hansen, business administrator; Terry Rhodes, board member; Jeff Nelson, board member; Larry Jepson, board member; I'm Kathy Christensen, board member; Roger Pulsifer, board member; Steve... Pulsifer, Board Member, Steve Norton, Superintendent, Randall Bagley, Board Member, and Alan Grunig, Board Member. And we're gonna start off with some recognitions tonight. So happy to have you here and be able to have the opportunity to recognize you for your success. And so we'll begin with the Mountain Crest FFA Club. And so glad that you guys got a big article in the newspaper today.
Okay, who's coming up?
Tyrell, who's coming up in this? Yes.
All right, so we were just gonna let these guys introduce themselves and their contests, what they learned from their contests, where they're planning on going with that knowledge they've learned, and then they're gonna report on how they did at Nationals.
I'm Hannah Walker. I was the chairman for our Parliamentary Procedures Team, which is basically, we demoed how to run a meeting efficiently, like what you're doing here today. We competed for a couple days. We did a test, a couple tests and a demo, and ended up being a silver-ranking team. From this experience, I have learned how to run a meeting and be a leader, and that will help me in my future career as I excel. Oh, and Reagan is, she, out of our team, she was the only registered parliamentarian, which means that she can, like, give knowledge and has a, like, job in parliamentary, can have a job in parliamentary procedure. So she's on like the same level as adults that take the test.
I am Sam Wyberg. I'm also on that same team. And parley, it was fun. It helped me talk to a lot of people, sort of. And, yeah, I'm going into, like, say ag business and stuff, and so that's gonna consist of talking to a lot of people and sales and communicating with people, so that's what it's helped me with.
I'm Bailey Summers, and Parliamentary Procedure has taught me how to speak publicly as well as get my point across efficiently, and this will help me as I go into the agricultural education industry, so that'll be really good.
I'm Shaylee Poppleton, and one thing that Parliamentary Procedure has taught me is how to be professional, because when you're doing a demo, you need to set aside everything that has happened previously that they need to focus on, what you're doing, what your goal is, and how to do that professionally. That's one thing that it's helped me with.
I'm Rhett Summers, and I'm gonna introduce one of our teams that couldn't be here today, our natural resource team that competed. We had James Curdie, Braden Summers, Wyatt Larson, and Chip Major on the team. They did really good, they worked really hard, they ranked silver at Nationals. So they did an excellent job there. And so, for me, my competition was agri-science, which, agri-science is, you find a problem in agriculture and you think of ways to fix it. So mine, I focused mostly on water conservation and time management for farmers. So me and my cousin Trevin Summers, we made a device that helps farmers save water and time in their fields, so they know when their irrigation can be shut off. So it helps them save water and stuff. And what I learned from this was a lot of teamwork. You have to work in a team well in this competition, and that'll help me in life, jobs, anything to work on a team. And so we ranked silver at Nationals. We placed eleventh, and we were approached by big companies who were very interested in the device, such as John Deere.
My name is Wells Thompson. The event I competed in was creed speaking, and in this event, I memorized the FFA creed, which is five paragraphs consisting of the FFA's goals and beliefs. So I memorized that, presented it in a group of, in front of a group of judges, and then they asked me questions about the creed and incorporated ag-related topics and judged me on that. At Nationals, I ended up placing third, which was really good and shows what hard work can do and how it pays off. And one thing that I really liked, learned from this competition, is how your communication skills will really benefit you in the future, and that's what I plan on using them for, is to get a good job and be, do what I wanna do.
And then our Mountain Crest FFA chapter, I'd like to personally thank everyone who's helped us along the way, especially our school administrators that were there at Mountain Crest, and also the school board who has made it possible for our high school to be able to have our FFA chapter. And then in our parley team, we also have Autumn Clark.
Wait, 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 we wanna get a picture. We'd like to get a picture of you. And just so everyone knows, they took third in the nation in one of the contests and placed in the top eight at Nationals in agri-science. So, great job. We're really proud of you.
Thank you.
Are there parents of these students here? If there are, would you stand? Let us recognize you, because it takes a lot of work from home, too. Good job. Okay, next, we would like to recognize the state 4A girls tennis champions from Ridgeline.
So these are five of the seven girls that played at the state championships for tennis this year for 4A. And we had two individual champions, and the team won the tennis championship as well. Their coach is Josh Hinkle, and at the end there, he's done a great job. He's been helping us for three years now, two years as the head coach, and we appreciate all he's done. He's going to introduce the girls and say what he'd like to say about the team.
Thanks, Bob. So we are missing tonight our first singles by the name of Nia Tillitt. She's a really big deal in the tennis community. She won state at first singles. Followed by Nia, we have Lucy Lyons. She played second singles for us and was a semifinalist. To her right, we have Maddie Branchley, who was the third singles state championship, state champion. And then on the very far right, we have Ally Wolford, and her doubles partner London Crandall is missing from our lineup tonight, but they were also semifinalists in state. And then we have Avery Chadwick on my right, and then Paige Lonhurst on the right, but a little in the middle. Who both also had a fantastic season. We just wanna say thank you to all of you guys for making the sports possible for high schools. We, as a team, I don't know, I've seen a team with higher character come out of a high school group. Tennis is a game where you have a lot of time to react to events, and in high school, you don't see a lot of people who react specifically well. This group was able to really do well with that. We handled ourselves in a very positive way. And I think that the big takeaway from this season is while we were not necessarily the favorite to win, I think we all walked away knowing that as you approach a situation or a challenge by expecting good things to come and putting in the level of work that you know what that takes, that the universe kind of works for you and things work out. And so we thank you for giving us that opportunity and hope you'll continue to make sports a priority. Thanks.
We need a picture. Are there any parents of these students here? We'd like to recognize you. If you'll please stand. Okay, we'll tell your parents, thanks. All righty. Next, we would like to recognize the top three A state honors for the Skyview Marching Band and Color Guard.
Well, thank you for giving this opportunity tonight. We've had a long tradition of having outstanding bands and marching bands at Skyview, and I think one of the biggest concerns we had when we were dividing the high school was Mr. Beach was going to go to Green Canyon. And you know, Green Canyon's continued to have an excellent band and marching band, but I'm happy to say that Skyview has continued the tradition of having just outstanding music programs and band. And as I listened to them at the ballgame the other night in the pep assembly yesterday, you know, you almost hear up at how, how much enthusiasm, you can tell the kids love each other, they care about each other, and, boy, they sound good. And I just wanna give so much credit to Mr. Brian Carpenter, who is our new band director and is, has built and will continue to build just an outstanding program, and they did. They performed very well. I actually sat by superintendent at one of the competitions down in St. George, and I was just so proud of them, and both our band and our color guard just excelled this year. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Carpenter for that.
Thanks, Mike. So I'm just gonna, I mean, I have nothing but agreeance to that. I mean, I was fortunate to come to a band program that was already well-established, and it's been just a real pleasure to work with these students. I really think that the band students represent the, you know, top one percent of our student body in so many ways. They're just the highest quality of character, great work ethic. I mean, these guys have been a lot of, a lot of fun to spend time with. These four represent our band and color guard together. There's a total of eighty, this year we had eighty-four in the marching band. We're gonna start from the left and just go across. This is Sadie Bingham. She was our flag captain this year, and she, our show this year was Rabian Nights, the story of Scheherazade, if you're familiar. And Sadie represented that, that character for us this year, Scheherazade. Then we've got Haley Mortimer, who was our rifle captain, and she's, she's been, the two of these girls have really been leading the color guard in a lot of ways. What they don't tell you is that when you go to college as a music major, they don't actually teach you how to spin a rifle or a flag. And so these two have really done a great job helping lead that portion of our, of our group. Next up is Anna Johnson. She was our flute soloist, and she's just been a phenomenal player for years in the band, but this year we had the opportunity to really showcase her and her ability. And we've even got some professors at USU that are already trying to tag her for, for their music program. And then next is Sydney Anderson. She was our head drum major this year. She's led the band for the last two years out on the field, and she's just been a phenomenal example of leadership. We have a great band program largely because we have a great student body and that they put in a lot of work. So I'd like to thank you guys. It helps, too, to have a phenomenal administration. There was a number of times where we, we needed things, particularly with the school split, and I've never had any trouble getting the tools that we need to succeed as a band. And a lot of that comes to having great administration like Mike and Kurt, who's here with us, too. We know that that, too, comes from having a very supportive school board. And so we appreciate everything that you guys do to help us provide these experiences. I just appreciate that I could be a part of it.
You know, I think it's worthy of note, too, that between the two high schools, we really have over two hundred students now involved in the band, and that's a real credit and maybe one of the blessings that comes from a split.
Congratulations to all of you. What a great job. Any parents of the band students here? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our final recognition, which is our Teacher of the Year for Skyview, Shelley Robinson.
Before I have Shelley come up, could you just do me a favor? Dale Hansen put out yesterday that we needed to take the driving course as part of our, you know, so we can drive district vehicles.
Oh, gotcha.
And so there's a test that you do online. Kurt Hanks has spent the last day or two just saying, "I don't want any recognition, I don't want any recor..." And I mean, to the point that all, that's just about all we've heard. He had a hundred percent, so I don't expect a Medal of Honor, but could...
Oh, yeah. Round of applause.
I know.
You've never had a hundred percent on anything in your life?
We're really proud of you.
But maybe Jenda could take your picture afterwards or something will do that, so... And I had eighty-eight percent, which my wife was really surprised I had even that much, because she thinks I'm less than average at driving, so, hundred percent, okay. Shelley, come up. I'm just so excited to recognize Shelley Robinson this year as our Teacher of the Year. So this is my description of Shelley, and you can see it. It's a French term, it's called joie de vivre, and it just means the joy of life. And everything that Shelley does and being in the hallway in her classroom and around students, it's the joy of life. And I really admire her spirit and what she brings and her connection with young people. It's very heartwarming. So I wanted to share a few things about Shelley. She's been teaching for eighteen years. She said, "I didn't initially plan on teaching, I wanted to be a writer photographer for National Geographic and/or an actress." But the opportunity presented itself when I was in California training for the Olympic Trials at twenty-one years old. You may know that Shelley was an outstanding track star at USU and then had the opportunity to be part of the bobsled team for the United States. And so she said, "I needed a job that worked with my training schedule. The rest of the story is, of course, that I fell in love with students and the profession. I never looked back. Calling it a job is laughable now, it's my life." And I know it's her life, because I know she sits through many dance recitals and football games, still correcting papers and giving student feedback on their writing. "It is my life that's defined me from that time forward. I earned my bachelor's degree in professional writing with a minor in theater from Utah State and a master's degree from Aesusa Pacific University. I can't imagine life without my students. As teachers, our medium is the human mind and spirit, and we have a hand in shaping young minds to think and question and create. I've taught in five different high schools in five different states because of my husband's college coaching career. I've taught in urban and rural settings, sunshine and snow. My favorite of these has always been Skyview High School, where she taught from two thousand four to two thousand nine, and we were fortunate enough to bring her back a few years ago. It was and still a magical place, and it feels like my home. Now my husband gets to experience it as well. I've coached track as long as I've been a teacher. I feel that coaching and teaching creates a nice electricity that can motivate both students and athletes, and I love to use past experience of triumph from failure in sports to teach students the value in trying, sometimes falling short, but never a spectator." This is, this is really an outstanding teacher. We, the way we do this at Skyview is we have her peer, or the peers nominate who they think is the Teacher of the Year. So I think this is a real honor, because her colleagues all look at her as being an outstanding teacher, and it's fun to be in her classroom, fun to watch what she does with kids. And so I present Shelley Robinson. And I think you ought to introduce your family.
I campaigned, I handed out a lot of candy. Just kidding. This is my husband, Danilo, who a lot of you know as our football coach, and he teaches history, government and history. This is our daughter, Sydney Robinson. She just came out of a dance class ballet. And this is our son, Dylan. And he's about to go to a basketball game, so they all made some time for this. This is total honor. It's one of my, probably one of my favorite awards. I've been angling for this for a while. No. No, honestly, this is, this, this means a lot to me, so thank you so much. Thank you, and congratulations. All righty, we'll go ahead and move on to our public input. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Kurt, would you come forward for a picture?
Come on, Kurt.
Maybe we could do it by the American flag.
Okay. We have no public input tonight. And so we'll move on to our consent agenda. And I will take a motion to pass our consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and vote on that. Oh, is there any discussion? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote. Okay. We're gonna just make a little quick adjustment here because Gary needs to leave. So he is going to give us some information on the approval of the at-risk student definition or present it to us to pass. And then he's gonna talk about the elementary classroom grouping policy at the same time. Oh, yeah.
Mine never showed up, Dale.
And Alan's out in the hall, too. So it showed up.
Oh, so we need to wait for him.
Do you want to vote verbally?
Yes.
Anybody want to tell Alan to come on in and vote?
Should I vote for Alan? I see, he's showed up.
He's did show.
Mike, just ask Alan if it's a yes vote.
Okay. Thank you.
That's just how they do it in the legislature.
Okay. So all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Gary.
Thank you. So if you'll recall, last time we met, or last time you met, I came and just proposed that we try wait until the state approved our at-risk definition for our UCA plan. And I believe that happened like the very next day. And so that definition is students who score below proficient or below benchmark as required on state testing along with ELL students scoring below a level five on the WEDA will be considered at risk of academic failure. The state has approved that. And I have pending on here, I just need, if you approve this as the board, I will mark that yes. And then I attach the minutes that it took place in this meeting. And then that will complete our UCA plan. So I come today just to see if we can get that approved.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve that.
I move that we approve the at-risk student definition.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote.
I apologize, but when they created the agenda here, they didn't set it up as an action item. I mean, it's on the action agenda. So we'll have to verbally take a vote if we can.
All right. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Okay. And everyone? Everyone approved that? Okay. You want to go ahead and move on to the elementary classroom grouping policy?
Yes. Thank you. So we have many of the policies on the electronic version now. But we did find, quite by accident, in the old turquoise binder that we packed around for years as principals, Section 2, Student Personnel Policy, under that, Student Transfers, Section F, Page 4.3, there was a policy. And the last time that was revised or negotiated was in January of 1994. So you have, I believe, that policy in front of you now. That policy on the left is the existing policy as it is. But as we looked at it, we wondered if we could maybe make some changes and revise this before it gets put on the electronic version. So you'll see on first paragraph, prior to the 15th of May, some administrators would like to have a little wider window. Oftentimes, those parent inputs and those class lists are done by May 15th so that they can plan. Some of the principals even start that process as early as March with the kindergarten registration. That's when they start to accept some parent input. So we wanted to change that to parent input will be gathered during a two-week period in the spring that is designated per school. That way, every principal has a little bit of latitude to set up that time when they want. And that would be a minimum of two weeks. If they wanted more time than that, they could extend that. But at least a minimum there. And then the very last paragraph on the current existing wording. And then, it says, "And then only if conditions exist which threaten the well-being of either student or teacher." This is talking about once school has started, we've asked parents to, they have to leave their kid in that class for at least 10 days before we're gonna consider making a change. And then it said that only if there was an existing condition in which the well-being of either the student or the teacher was threatened. Who and how do you determine the well-being of that? We just wanted to eliminate that and say, "Give it a try for 10 days, and then it'll be up to the principal to make final decision of whether that child has moved out of a classroom or not." So.
Okay. Any questions?
I wonder if you should add the word minimum in that first paragraph before a two-week period because I, when I read it, I assumed that meant that was a tiny window.
That was all, okay. I can do that. Add the word minimum. Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will go back to our action item for the approval of the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Or the classroom.
Oh. Oh. Are you doing the classroom, too, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do that one first?
Okay. I'll do that one first. Okay, Board. So a couple of times, we've talked about the classroom addition on at Ridgeline. And just to update you on the basic notes, in the fall of 2017, that was estimated to put those 10 classrooms on at about 3.4 million. Right now, we have 4 million set aside. Dale has it in different funding categories that we feel like we could be able to proceed and put those 10 classrooms on. The architect would be Design West. They own the plans. And so that's the reason why we'd be working directly with them. And then the contractor would be DWA, mainly because we're still, our bond is still open, and he's still our contractor underneath those provisions. And we feel very comfortable in doing that. So this time, we're asking for the Board's approval that we could move ahead and start those 10 classrooms on at Ridgeline.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the classroom additions of Ridgeline High School.
I move that we approve the addition of the 10 classrooms at Ridgeline High School.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Dale, does fiscal year '20, does that refer to next year, starting in July?
Yeah. It'd be the 1920 year. Just like that. That'd be next school year.
So a million of that, to use a million of that for this project, how much do you expect that we'll have left?
Well, this year, we're funded at, what, three, about $3.5 million in capital equalization funding. And we anticipate that that'll go up next year, again, a small amount. And so it would still leave, you know, $2.5 million there for other projects. It could be good.
But it takes about a third of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
What's kind of the timeframe for beginning and ending on this? Do you have a timeframe?
Our plans would be to actually start breaking the ground late spring. And it would take the year. They'd be able to occupy a year from when we start. So it'd be August of '20. It'd be August of '20. They'd be able to occupy. And then we talked about some possible class-saving space at a couple of our elementaries by moving some preschools into some of those rooms, which is working very well right now in a couple of our other high schools. And Joel would really like to do that. And then it frees up a couple of classrooms in elementary schools that need the space as well.
Anything else? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay. All the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right. The school calendar.
School calendar is always a fun time when you get the different groups together and visit. And so just to give you a quick reminder, we have administrators represented, the teachers, two PTA representatives, classified representative. And then we had a representative from the district. And then Jeff was part of our discussions, representing on the board. The, when it comes right down to it, there's two things that really make the calendar work one way or the other. And one is, how long's the Christmas break going to be? And the second one is, we want to be, we want to have all of our breaks, but we still want to be out by the end of May. Okay? And, well, we can do some of that, but we can't do all of that. But we did have an option one and option two. Our option one calendar gave all of the breaks. Start at school on a Thursday, is what our teachers prefer, to, you know, a Thursday, Friday. And then their preschool days are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But there have been a couple of times in the past few years we've started school on a Wednesday. They didn't really like that, but it worked out, and we were able to do that. But anyway, option one gives that full 10, full two weeks for Christmas break. You're actually out of school days, 10 school days. They're out on option one. Full spring break on option one. You get out of school on June 4th. Okay? The option number two, the big difference on this one is we're starting school on a Wednesday. Christmas break is eight days rather than 10. Spring break is four days over a weekend. So it feels like it's longer, okay? But we do unschool the last day of May. And one of the options that we looked at here on option two was, well, let's just start school on Tuesday. If we do it on Tuesday, we could get the full five days in spring break. And no, not interested in doing that. So we explored lots of options when we were going through this. And the final feedback that came back was for option two, which means the breaks are a little bit shorter and we're ending in May. Just as a side note, this year, our Christmas break, we have seven school days. Just don't want to break your heart, Superintendent. Just, we have seven days for Christmas break.
I want to know how the term feels like.
Yeah.
Got into this discussion.
Yeah.
It feels like to me that Christmas break is going to be a little too short.
But this year, Christmas break is seven days. So option two is eight days. And option one would have been a full two weeks. So, but the committee and the input that they got back was option two, parents were overwhelming the feedback they received back for option two. They don't really like the idea of a long Christmas break, you know, when you get in those discussions. So what I'm asking for Board approval tonight is for option two, where we end school the last day of May.
The thing is, they're gonna take that week of spring break, Monday and Tuesday. They're gonna go for those days. And then they're gonna get a six school days because they're gonna take Monday and Tuesday off.
Yeah. Some will do that.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the option two, 2019-20 calendar.
I move that we approve option two of the 20, 20,000, sorry, 2019-2020 school calendar. Second.
Hey, any questions, discussion?
I just have one because I'm just looking at the responses. And there are hundreds of responses from teachers and classified employees or support personnel, which is what they're really called. But only 13 from parents. So how much backlash are we gonna have because only 13 parent responses?
That's all that Stacy picked up on her survey where she was Googling it. But the PTA folks that came to the meeting brought back, they had other sources of feedback. They were trying to get it through a Google form somehow, and it didn't work for the PTA. They got a little bit of it. But the two representatives from the north and the south brought their information to the meeting, which isn't represented in this feedback sheet here.
Anything else? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay. All the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Okay. And the approval, oh, we already did that one. Okay. So we'll move down to our reports. CAPSA Human Sexuality Curriculum Review.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to Shelley Heron. She is the Prevention Education Supervisor. You can come on and stand here next to me for CAPSA. We had a board policy that was approved. Let me see when this was approved. July 20th of 2017, called the Human Sexuality Policy. That was in line with state law. And as part of your responsibility as board members is to approve instructional materials for guest presenters or, anyway, guest presenters in the district. I can't remember the exact language in the policy. So first of all, that goes before what's called our Human Sexuality Committee. It consists of individuals from the district, administrators, and parents. There has to be as many parents on that committee as there is cash county employees. We review those materials. This is a big task. If you look in the definition on that policy, on what constitutes human sexuality instruction, it is sexual abstinence, human sexuality, human reproduction, reproductive anatomy, physiology, pregnancy, marriage, which is a pretty broad topic, childbirth parenthood, which is also a very broad topic, contraception, sex abuse, sexual assault, rape, HIV/AIDS, other sexually transmitted disease. And now they've added refusal skills as well as part of this law. This is all my chicken scratches from today of digging back through. This was just revised in the last legislative session. And at the beginning of November, the administrative rules were all changed. So you will see me back here at a future board meeting to modify what's only a year-old policy in the district and bring it in line with the new state law and state administrative rules. There's a lot, CAPSA does a fabulous job in our school district and have worked in our school district for a long time, teaching prevention strategies to our students. And I don't believe you've ever had to come and have your materials approved.
We have. It's just been a number of years.
Number of years. So while what you have online is a copy of the modules that they present, several of those modules, really, I don't think need to come before the board. But we wanted you to see all of what CAPSA does when they're in our schools. For example, the first module is on confidence. It's a great module on teaching students about having confidence. But the two that we thought probably needed board review was the one on violence. And that gets into dating violence and some other issues. And the other one was on relationships, which gets into healthy relationships. The committee really liked the approach that CAPSA takes because it's a very positive approach. It's not too controversial in any place. But they do get questions in class. They're very clear when they stand up to do a presentation that, you know, if the students ask a question, they're under the, kind of the same rule that our teachers are. They can respond. But they know the things that they need to stay away from and how those responses need to be crafted. Shelley's actually volunteered. There's some sex education training that all of our teachers have to, not all of our teachers, all the teachers that teach human sexuality have to take.
The only module that I can open is the healthy relationships outline.
Really?
Yeah, I can't open any of the rest of them.
Well, that didn't work really well, did it?
It's really good.
I went through and opened them all, yeah.
That was great.
They're all listed, there are. I can't open any of them.
It says there's an error processing your request, please use your browser's back button to return to the previous page and try your request again.
Well, we apologize. I thought those were up and available, and they've been up for a while on the agenda, so. Okay, did you have any questions about that one?
We'll get them available.
We'll make those available.
The, the one that I like, the, the one that I read, I thought was really well done. What class is this taught in?
Primarily, we are, we can have it on different tiers. Our number one priority is health classes because that's the core standards that we tried to build our presentation. From the curriculum that we use, we tried to match it with core standards. But we also are, are in adult role classes, and then we also go into a couple of the resource classes at a couple of the high schools throughout. We do offer some of the ones like confidence building to any class. If they have a substitute, why watch The Grinch? Why don't you bring us in, and we'll talk about confidence building? So, there are a few of those. But healthy relationships, dating violence, those are specific to health classes and adult roles.
Do you do any in middle school?
We do. We're sixth to 12th grade, so we have it in, in both. Dating violence is only in the high schools, but other than that, all of them are available.
I, I'd really like to see the others, they look great to me.
We'll get that taken care of so that it opens up.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right.
I'll email that out to you, so you have that well before you would vote on that at the next session, so.
That'd be great.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we'll move down to our board committee report, and Roger's gonna be talking to us a little bit about this 2019-20 secondary student fees to education providers, and I think, was that big document that came?
There was supposed to be a link that you could click on it, but I sent you an email today to the board members.
Oh.
If you just click on that for the high school fees, it will pop up. We don't have to approve it, we just have to be aware that those are the fees that Bridgeline will be charging next year. So, that would be for the 19-20. So, if you could just look at those so you're aware of it, that's all we are required to do. And the other thing, I think we just oughta, you know, mentioned that Mr. Lickety was recognized as part of the committee, of those working on the STEM Academy. They were awarded as the winner of the 2018 Utah Career in Technical Education Excellence in Action Award, offering CTE for all the high schools, and we appreciate Mike for what he does to help our high schools and do that for us. Thanks, Mike.
Nice job.
Good job. Maybe we need his picture, too.
We're highlighting that in all that Cash Valley magazine. That's right, the end of the month. Yeah, the cash value magazine next month.
Oh, good.
Awesome.
Okay, great, thanks.
Roger, I got your email, but there wasn't a link.
Yeah, mine didn't have a link.
Not an active link in it.
I didn't have a link here.
It doesn't say anything there?
No.
I'll try it again.
Okay, for the...
Hey, before we, before we leave that, could I just make a quick announcement about the reclassification that we completed today? Our area did not change. We're still 4A, and our region consists of the six schools that are in our region. And Orem is no longer a 4A classification, they are a 5A classification, so that's a good thing for us.
Who is?
Orem.
Oh, then we play them.
Yeah, well, they've been pretty strong in football.
They've been dominant, not pretty strong.
Yeah, they're dominant, yeah.
All right, so a good thing for us.
Yeah, it's a good thing for us.
Thank you so much for going to that meeting. It's a, what, a two-day meeting? A lot of commitment there. All right, as far as the board president report, I, just what I wanted to mention first is that Carolyn would like to know if your spouses are going to be attending USBA and what meals they will be eating there, and then you can get the price from her. I'm sorry I didn't get that information, so that that can be taken care of. Is everyone planning to go?
And the one piece of information you might wanna know is there, there will be no speaker at the, at the Saturday lunch, so if you're not, if you're just interested in food, you can probably find it cheaper than that meal. So, just...
Has ours already been paid for, though?
Yours is, yeah.
So...
The board members.
Is paid for.
Paid for, but your spouse, if they, they could find a cheaper meal, or you could just decide you both wanna just hop in the car and drive to Maddox.
So, can we cancel that meal so we don't lose the money?
We could.
So, let Carolyn know if you don't wanna be there for lunch. Okay? All right?
Dry chicken is always good, you know.
All right, and thank you, everyone, so much. I just really appreciate all that you do, and does everyone know how to get to my home? Okay. All right, Superintendent.
You know, they have a, I don't know if it originated there, if it was in another high school before, but Skyview has a great saying, "It's a great day to be a bobcat." It's just a great day to be a member of this school board and school community. Tonight, just wonderful example of, of young people who are excelling, and I don't think you could find a better example of what a teacher of the year is than Shelley Robinson. She's, her words expressed it well, what it means to be a teacher and be in lives, involved in the lives of students. It's just a great time. And Merry Christmas to y'all, and you have a card and a box of chocolates, and.
Oh, thank you.
May things go well for you in the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to our district folks. We appreciate all that you do, and being here at the meeting, and our UNISERV director. Appreciate you coming, too, as well. You're welcome anytime. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn, and then I'll just race you all over to my house.